Good afternoon and welcome everyone to the April eighth. City of Apopka Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. If you would all please join me to stand for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. During each agenda item of tonight's meeting, there will be a time for members of the public to speak upon that agenda item. If there is anyone here with something to speak to the board about that is planning and zoning related, now would be the time to be recognized. Seeing none, we'll move to the approval of meeting minutes, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Does anyone have any changes or additions? All right, we'll hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve the minutes for March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, sir. A motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right. Public hearing number one. Ordinance three, one, zero, two, change of zoning master plan and master development plan. Golden Gem Estates. Owners, Tim Birchfield, Stacy and Robert Moss. Applicants, GL Summit Engineering, care of Jeffrey L. Summit PE. Location, west of Golden Gem Road and south of Nightshade Grove Lane and Sadler Road. Ms. Sanchez.
Good evening, Jean Sanchez with the.
Ms. Sanchez, let me interrupt you.
I'm sorry.
This is quasi judicial, I need to ask the members of the board, has anybody had ex parte communication on this matter?
No.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sanchez. Please carry on.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the change of zoning from County A1 Citrus Rural to City KPI MU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use. Neighborhood overlay district assignment, master plan and major development plan for Golden Gem Estates. Subject properties are located west of Golden Gem Road and south of Nightshade Grove Lane and Sadler Road. It is nineteen point seven six acres in size. The applicant is requesting a change of zoning to be consistent, compatible with the surrounding properties as well as compliant with the city's comprehensive plan and land development code. The properties were annexed to the City of Apopka on October sixteen, two thousand twenty-four, and a future land use amendment from county rule to mix, to city mixed use was adopted on December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four by ordinance numbers three, zero, seven, three and three, zero, seven, four respectively. Master plan, major development plan details subdivision plan for sixty-five single-family detached units on nineteen acres. The applicant proposes almost three acres of open space that includes a dog park, walking area in the central portion of the subdivision, a seating gathering space and a trail around the stormwater pond. The master plan, major development plan shows a connection to Greenshade Grove Lane through the adjacent Cardenia Reserve subdivision as well as the primary ingress egress on Golden Gem Road. They also propose the following site design standards, including minimum required setbacks of front porch setback of ten feet, side setback of fifteen, rear setback of twenty and minimum living area of thirteen hundred square feet. These are the architectural renderings proposed by the applicant. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from County A1 Citrus Rural to City KPI MU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, a neighborhood overlay district assignment, master plan and major development plan based on the findings and facts in the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Does anyone have questions of staff? Commissioner Ryan.
So when will Golden Gem Road be brought up to city standards?
Um, right now, we are actually working on getting the interlocal change of jurisdiction for the northern portion of Golden Gem Road into the city with Orange County. Um, I, I actually just received the final draft today and um, I have to schedule it for the next available city council meeting to be heard.
Do you have a possible date of completion of this road?
I don't know a possible date. We're still on the design. It's undergoing design right now, even though we haven't um, taken over the jurisdiction yet. So we're at thirty percent design. Um, I don't have the commencement for construction of the actual road yet to bring the northern part to city standards.
Will this uh, project be finished before the uh, road is brought to city standards?
I, I'll have to defer that to the applicant. I don't have a date for the construction, so.
Okay, who's in charge of that? Is it the city or?
I'm sorry?
Is it the city or the, the developer in charge of uh, bringing this uh, Golden Gem Road at the city standards?
It is a combination, so we will use um, Golden Gem is actually part of the um, Kelly Park pioneering agreement. So the design fund came from the pioneering agreement from the escrow account.
Originally, Golden Gem Road wasn't part of the pioneer agreement, but just now it is. Is that true?
I'm sorry, repeat that.
Originally wasn't part of the pioneer agreement.
The design was, not the construction. The design of Golden Gem to bring it up to city standard from Capitol Reef Way all the way to Kelly Park Road. That's the termini.
Okay, is the construction under the pioneer?
I am not aware of any construction funding. That's probably.
So we have, we have plans and, and no funding and no completion date? Not good, okay.
Any more questions of staff?
Yes, I, I have a question.
Commissioner.
Uh, Ms. Sanchez, um, when you say the northern part of, of Golden Gem, does the northern part go south of this proposed development?
Yes, it's about um, it's right south. Capitol Reef Way is within Park View Reserve.
Is, is south of Brown Lake Road, so that it goes farther south?
South of this subdivision right here.
Okay, and, and my next question is, this development, how will this development affect the Golden Gem water um, situation that the state of Florida has now imposed penalties against the city of Apopka?
I don't have the answer to that. I'll have to defer it to our city engineer or one of our engineers.
Good afternoon. Vladimir Simonovski, I'm the new city engineer. Um, started last Monday, so staying busy. Uh, if you're referring to the uh, situation with a Golden Gem pond?
Yes.
Okay, so that's only for storage of reclaimed water. So that should not be affecting anything regarding the water system or the wastewater system in this area. So the wastewater collection will continue as planned. The water distribution will continue as planned. The reclaimed water is still, there's a piping system that goes all the way to the north, to my knowledge, to uh, Kelly Park Road actually and even further. So even without that facility being in place right now, reclaimed water can be distributed to the new developments.
Okay. Any more questions? Any more questions of staff? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sure we have some questions for the applicant. Anyone have questions, the applicant? Commissioner Woods.
Yeah, real quick, yeah. Jeff Summit, Summit Engineering, three, six, six, seven, Simonton Place, Lake Mary, Florida.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have some questions on stormwater.
Yes, sir.
Um, if I'm looking and if I'm verifying, is that? It looks like a, close to eighty percent of the open space is stormwater pond?
A large portion of the open space is a stormwater pond. We also have a perimeter buffer track that goes around the development as well. It's kind of hard to see, but it's OS one, OS two and, and uh, OS four. It goes around the south side. So we do have a perimeter buffer as well that is part of the landscape buffer around the perimeter of the site. And then we have the large interior open space track, track OS three that's in the middle interior block there. That's, that's our primary recreational open space.
Uh, is that a wet pond or a dry pond?
No, this is actually a dry pond and, and if you don't mind, I'm going to use your question to segue into responding to Mr. Ryan's previous question in regards to Golden Gem Road. So as part of this project in regards to your question about who's funding and who's building Golden Gem Road, as Ms. Sanchez says, right now Golden Gem Road's in design. It's in design. It's being, it's, you know, so thirty percent plans, I think they're working on sixty percent plans. As part of that project, the city's had to acquire areas to handle stormwater runoff for that roadway improvement. So what, what I've done in this project and what the city's asked me to do with this project is so the way this pond has been designed, we're actually taking three point eight five acres of that roadway project drainage into this pond to help facilitate the construction and widening of Golden Gem Road. So as far as how this partnership is working, I just want everybody to be aware that we're trying to, we're trying to balance it out, right, between the city and the public sector and the private sector to make sure that we get this whole thing to work so that when all these projects come together, that the facilities are there for the widening of the roadway so that that roadway project can actually take place and it's not just a a nice set of paper plans that you can never build because you haven't acquired the property you need. So I just wanted to, to, to throw that out there in that regard.
Well, I've got another question for you. Um. Will the, will the road be finished by the time your project's finished?
I, I don't, I define finish of the project by the time the infrastructure's done or by the time, or by the time all the homes are built. I mean, by the time the infrastructure's done, probably not. By the time the homes are all built, I don't know, because that depends on sales, it depends on velocity, so who knows the answer to that question, but.
I know, but you have, must have arranged for three to five years.
I mean, infrastructure wise, the goal is to be done with this project this year, right? I mean, as far as sales are concerned, no, I, I can't make projections on sales. I don't do that. I mean, I, I put pipes in the ground and put roads in the ground. I don't sell houses, so I can't really give you a projection as to how long that would take, so.
Well, my concern is that the road be ready for your project, you know, because right now it's a non-safe road and you probably agree with that.
But I understand the concern. It's been a concern we've had with all these projects on Golden Gem Road, going back for what, I've been doing this like six or seven years now on Golden Gem Road. And every time we come to these meetings and even the city council meetings, that's always the concern. And I think the issue has been is that trying to get Orange County to work in concert with the city because Orange County hasn't paid attention to Golden Gem Road because of the fact that they didn't really care. The development that was happening on Golden Gem Road was a city development, and so the county wasn't paying a priority or paying any attention to it. So with the, with the ILA, with the city actually taking over control of Golden Gem Road, it now gives the city the ability to control the destiny with the improvements and obviously the first step is going to be design.
I mean, do you, do you blame the county for not doing anything because the um, City of Apopka annexes both sides of the road, which is moneymaker? The road doesn't make money, it's just a liability. There's no tax revenue coming from Golden Gem Road, but there is on both sides of.
Well, there, but there is revenue coming from Golden Gem Road to the city in regards to traffic impact fees for the developments that are taking place. And it's those transportation impact fees that go into the CIP program that fund these construction projects for these widens.
Would they go to the city, not the county?
Yeah, and, and so they're, right, so there's the catch twenty-two, right? The county has no interest in playing get the road to the city and the city's collecting the money, so the city wasn't able to do anything because the road control was all that was out here and it was ambiguous and nobody knew what was going to happen. But now that we know what's going to happen with Golden Gem Road, right, now that we know that the county, the city's going to take it, you can actually put a plan in motion to get it, to get it resolved, and that's what we're trying to do.
For years, I've been saying the county's not going to do anything because there's no incentive, you know, why, why should they put millions of dollars into a road with no revenue?
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't either.
So I mean, it, it was between, it was basically it's between the city and the developers to figure something out.
Well, I think we have. I think we finally got there, right? I think we've, we've got, you're going to have control of the road.
You have plans, but you don't have funding and you don't have uh, any dates.
Well, but you see, and, and unfortunately, that's kind of the old chicken and egg scenario, right? It is, you gotta have the money before you can set the timing on the funding and you can set the construction and how do you get the money? So either you're going to have to allocate it out of the general fund or you're going to have to take these transportation impact fees that the city gets when these developments come in and you're going to have to set those funds aside for those improvements. And unfortunately, there is always a lag in that issue and there's, you know, unless, I'm sorry, unless we all have deep pockets with infinite, infinite amounts of money, I don't know how we exactly solve that to get the roads done before the developments are done.
Well, to me, the, the planning means nothing unless there's funding behind it, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions of the applicant?
Uh, I'm not, I wasn't done yet.
Commissioner would.
Okay, uh, if you take a look at the pond, it's right next to Golden Gem Road.
Correct.
And when it gets widened, how close is that pond going to be to the road? My concern is overflow. You know, the, I'm assuming it's built for the hundred-year flood.
It, it is, it is a dead storage hundred-year flood pond, yes.
But as we all know, we can have three storms and the total of three storms will be a hundred and fifty-year flood.
Well, I mean, we could, we can't design for those.
Well, I understand, but what assurance does the city have that that's not going to overflow onto Golden Gem and what type of um, steps are you taking to prohibit that from happening?
Well, I mean, the biggest advantage you're going to have in regards to Golden Gem Road and any potential overflow is that the road's going to be about four and a half to five feet higher than the pond is.
Okay.
So the road's already going to be elevated on the pond. The pond sits down in a hole, so you're, you'll flood, you'll flood the roads in the subdivision before you flood Golden Gem Road if, if it ever gets that high.
So you'll be at um, about four and a half feet.
No, it's just nat- natural topography, it's just natural topography, right?
When, when they build the road up?
They don't have to, but no, it, today it's four and a half to five feet high, yeah. Today it is, yeah.
Okay.
Because the top of my pond, if I'm, and don't hold me to this because I don't have the final plans in front of me, I think it's one oh seven and the road's at like one eleven to one thirteen, right there at the low point.
Okay. So you are confident that we won't have any flooding on Golden Gem to go into the development?
We designed it, so I mean, it's based off city code. It's eleven point eight inches in twenty-four hours and I did not even use infiltration to do the analysis. It's a dead storage pond because there's nowhere for this water to go. That is the low point in the local area.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions of that? Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
I've got a question for um, Mr. Hand. Is inadequate um, infrastructure a reason to vote no on this?
One of the criteria that was listed. Pardon me, reading the, the note here. Uh, one of the criteria that's listed within the staff report, um, it's the final bullet point. You can take a look at that in the staff report. It would, would result in development that is adequately served by public facilities. In other words, streets, floodable water, sewage, stormwater management, et cetera. And ultimately, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so decision you make, of course, has to be based on the evidence you've heard this evening.
Figure it out to the no.
But what I'm telling you is, uh, one of the criteria that you're obligated to consider is whether the development would be adequately served by public facilities, and that does include uh, roads. And uh, you know, as far as testimony goes, you haven't received any testimony that it would not be adequately served this evening. Ultimately, you do have to make your decision based on, you know, what you've heard and your either acceptance or rejection of that.
Thank you.
Any more questions? I do have a, a, a point in to, to what you just said. I, I think we're, we're back to the slippery slope that we have that we as a board are trying to hold the developer responsible or put pressure on the developer to resolve this issue or, or question them about the streets and, and I think it's the, you know, taking the horse out of the barn after it's uh, too late. I, I, I don't know, it's a slippery slope. It's kind of like with the school thing where the schools never have adequate thing and then do we let the development go to fund the roads to get the roads done or put pressure on the city or the county or whoever to do the roads? So uh, how do you hold the people who have bought property there and want to develop it accountable for something that's really out of their control? They don't have any, any ability to push it forward.
Yes, and ultimately you heard some of the testimony addressed impact fees and impact fees are paid to address that infrastructure and are, are paid.
But they're after the fact.
Uh, they're paid at the time of permitting and so, yes, I mean.
Well, as far as road construction and building construction, the house will be done far before the road, the, the impact fees will, will come as an after.
Can't say, I can't say that necessarily. Uh, roads may be constructed or they, they could be constructed concurrently with the development. As you said, you know, the stages of development, uh, you know, first the infrastructure goes in and then over a period of years and depending what a phasing plan is and so forth, the size of the development, you know, development and homes may take, you know, uh, an indefinite amount, indefinite period, depends on each development.
No, I, I understand. I would say in the real world that usually the road improvement follows the development.
Oftentimes, that is the case.
And that's, I think that's exactly what we're looking at in this particular case.
Yes, sir.
But so how do we, how do we weigh that out? That, that's, that's a difficult decision for us to say, okay, this road will not support the subdivision is really a bad idea. Well, wait a minute. You know, that's not the responsibility of the applicant or the builder or the people with the money behind it. So i- it's a difficult thing. Is it fair to them to hold them accountable that the road's not up to speed when their impact fees, of course, will help push that process? And I guess from the, the testimony earlier, it's in process and we're working towards that, but we're not there yet, so.
And that's the purpose of traffic studies and so forth that come during the, the development process to ultimately make sure that is supportable.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to find the proposed change of zoning from County A1 Citrus Rural to City KPI MU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use Neighborhood Overlay District Assignment Master Plan, Master Development Plan consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas and recommend approval based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Mott. Do I have a second?
I'll second the change of motion, the change of zoning.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, on to site plans. Excuse me. On ditch, excuse me, Onditch South Major Development Plan. Applicants, Appian Engineering, care of Luke Kleison. Uh, location, southwest corner of Onditch Road and Effie Drive. As this is quasi ju- quasi judicial, I would have to ask the board if anyone has had ex parte communication on this matter.
No.
No.
No, sir.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to Ms. Sanchez.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the Onditch South Residential Major Development Plan. The subject properties are located on the southwest corner of Onditch Road and Effie Drive. It is approximately fifty-four point eight five acres in size. The properties are within the KPI MU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use Zoning District as well as within transition and neighborhood district overlays. The major development plan details plan for a mix of residential products comprising three hundred and twenty-six single-family detached and attached units and a future commercial development on a one point three seven acre tract. The plan calls for a hundred and ninety-three twenty-foot wide town home units, ninety-five rear-loaded lots with thirty foot wi- thirty feet, thirty-four feet of width and thirty-eight rear-loaded u- units with forty feet of width. The transition overlay requires an open space area of fifteen percent equivalent to six point zero one acres based on their transition area overlay. And the neighborhood overlay requires twenty percent corresponding to two point nine acres based on the area for their neighborhood overlay district. This totals about eight point nine three acres of open space. The applicant proposes eleven acre. These acres of open space encompasses an amenity area playground buffer and amenitized stormwater pond, internal connection points offered from the south of the subdivision that includes a link to the crossroads development to the south via Firebrush Drive right of way and two others east of said road. The plan also shows traffic calming elements such as a traffic circle and on-street parking along the east and western side roads. The landscape plan proposes a diverse variety of trees that includes live oaks, red maples, sycamores and southern magnolia trees located within the project area and installed with root barriers to block or redirect tree roots, preventing damage to structures and pavements. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the major development plan based on the findings, effects and staff reporting exhibits. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff? Okay.
But I have a couple, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, Ms. Sanchez, I don't, uh, in the whole packet, it was listed as page eighty-eight of a hundred and seven. I couldn't get it to pull up here fast enough, so I went directly to the packet. So it's showing as page eight of fifteen and it's a color, uh, uh, um, section where there's color and essentially the red is, here's where the trees are going to be removed and the green is trees that are going to be retained.
Right.
It, it's, it is what I'm looking at. And so one of the questions that I had in the very bottom right-hand corner, I can see where there's a stormwater pond and of course, you're going to take the trees out where the stormwater pond is going to be, but just adjacent to that, which would be, I believe, east um, or just to the right of that bottom one on this one here in the very bottom, just to the right of that. It says commercial site and it shows um, green circles of trees that appear that they're going to be retained. My question is, when that commercial site is developed, I would guess that those trees would be leveled and is that included in the formula of the numbers as if those were going to be removed? Even though they're lit or shown as green?
I'll, I'll let the applicant um, answer that question.
Am, am I, am I saying that, that you?
I understand your question, the retention, the canopy retention.
Well, well, and, and because it's a commercial site, at, at some point in the future, that would be developed and then these green trees being retained are within the.
If it's counted towards their retention right now.
Yeah, they're in the formula. Yeah, that's.
Ms. Sanchez, hang on. Ms. Sanchez, let's, let's finish with the staff questions first and then you can bring that back up.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Um, anyone else have thing for staff?
All right, Commissioner Ryan.
These are all townhouses, it looks like.
No, they're both attached and detached, so there are smaller lots, um. The twenty-foot wide lots are townhomes and the thirty-four and forty lots are uh, detached units.
Like bungalows, you mean?
Bun- bungalows is what they call it.
Is there any room, is there any room for trees on these small lots, tiny lots? Because I know, I know that last development, there was a minimum of three trees per lot. Is there any minimum for these lots? And if not, why not?
There are required street trees on here and there are lots required, so the landscaping plan, um, unfortunately, when the land development code was contemplated, the development design guidelines in particular that requires canopy trees on all single-family lots. We've had to have interpretations, especially in the past, about what kind of trees they would be in order to prevent um, larger trees that would take over and destroy pavement and infrastructure. So the previous um, internal interpretation has been to allow them to substitute smaller under-story trees, especially if they are adjacent to um, public rights of ways. Um, in this case though, I'll, uh, I have required or we've required most of the trees, especially along the rights of ways or infrastructures to have root barriers. So um, there are rooms uh, for lot trees and there's also um, in the plans for street trees.
Are there trees required in every lot?
There are trees required in every, in every lot, yes, sir.
There's three hundred and twenty-six units, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um. Mr. Howe, I emailed you some questions this morning.
Yes, and I have the public.
Yes, and I have the public, um, city engineer here to answer those questions.
Do you already answer those?
Yes, good afternoon, Vladimir Simonovsky again.
Okay, my first question is, is there any plans to increase the city wastewater treatment capacity before twenty twenty nine?
The city is currently working with the Water Resources Engineering Consultant on the plants. And actually, the renewal, if I, my collection served me well, the, the renewal of the permit is due in July twenty twenty eight. So the design will most likely be addressed prior to that. Uh, I'm not sure, it's going to depend on the development of the plants, on the funding and other factors probably. When construction can start and when the project will be completed. Typically for a project like this, it will most likely be additional five million gallons a day. Uh, wastewater treatment plant, right? Which is the equivalent of the one that was placed in, uh, two thousand and nineteen, at the end of two thousand and nineteen. So it should take about two years for completion. Uh, it can take up to three years depending on materials and. Equipment and we know how that goes typically with construction, especially now.
Okay, so there's no plans and there's no funding in place to increase ca- capacity, which will. The best. Estimated is, is early twenty twenty nine and we're less than four years away from that.
Yes, so the, the plan is to expand the wastewater treatment plan to at least five million gallons a day.
Okay, back in July, um, June of last year. You're at seventy percent capacity. Do you have any idea what capacity you're at now?
I'm not sure, a- again, I'm only, uh, a few days here in the city, so. I, we, we can look into that and probably by the next meeting, we can have some of the data available for you.
Yeah, I would like to know what capa- what capacity, what percentage of capacity we're at now, um. I think that's it for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, does anyone have questions on the applicant?
Yeah.
I can repeat my question if you need me to.
I think I have it all.
Um, let, let, let me, uh, Mr. Class, let me, uh, ask you just one thing. So my question is about that commercial, uh, section there in the bottom right hand corner. And then at the top of, of this, uh, sheet, it's not the one that's on the screen right now, the one that has the color, the red and the green. Where trees are removed, there is a, um, uh. A section kind of in a cloud bubble, it describes the tree mitigation. And it has numbers. And so when you're answering a question, I'll just ask my last question to you. Cause this property has a massive amount, a massive amount of trees. That, you know, that are on and will, will be removed and it, it has them in inches. The amount of tree removal in inches, so I, I get that and I understand that. And then it has, you know, um, the total inches that are on site currently is twelve thousand five hundred twenty three inches. The, um, inches that are going to re- be removed are eleven thousand six hundred seventy. The inch is going to be replaced, which is not the green, those are going to be saved, replaced would be what you would plant. After a fact. And then it talks about, um, total inches deficit, seven thousand nine hundred eight. Um, so my question additionally about the commercial lot and then the deficit. That deficit, can you explain where that goes and what happens to the deficit?
Sure, uh, Luke Class, just for the record, Luke Class and Appian Engineering, two 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 one Lee Road. So to answer your question, I tried to take them in order the way you asked them, for the commercial trees. Yes, there are some tree saves in that commercial lot. There is some grading we're trying to do to flatten out the pad and make it, um. Viable for sale so that it's more attractive to potential buyers. Um, the tree saves are on the roadway. Adjacent to the roadway dedication right there on, uh, F E Drive as well as on the southern side. Those tree saves and some mark canopy aren't included in our total canopy collection, uh, tree saves, but they are included in our total tree saves. Our thought process is that you don't know what ultimately is going to go there, like if a. If, if it's a mini warehouse, then they're going to wipe the whole thing, it's just very impervious. But if it ends up being like a playground or a daycare center. Then that might save a lot more trees. You just don't know what the end use is going to be. And so we are counting them. If that comes in in the future or when it comes in in the future for commercial development, city staff will make them resurvey those trees. And if they do mitigate, if they do remove those, they'll have to mitigate for those and have to take those into account. So. It's not the, the city, it's not that they can get double counted, like we can count them to keep them now, but then take them down later. If they take them down later with whatever the commercial development comes in in the future, they'll have to count for this as well. So you always have the same count, it'll be an accurate count. But we are keeping as many as we can while still grading and making it a viable out parcel for sale. Uh, with regard to the tree saves, um, on the, you were talking about to the ones to the north along on ditch?
No, the, the, um, the deficit of inches, what, what happens to that?
The deficit, so here at this M D P stage, city staff has already sent us out a, when there's a deficit, you have a tree mitigation fee. And they can answer better for that. There's a whole calculation in the code on how you pay for that. There is a certain amount of canopy retention, we've met that requirement. We do have, uh, one of the benefits of doing a more dense project where you have all rear loaded projects. Is that you provide more open space areas and, and areas for people to play. And so we have different open space little alcoves and little tracks and sections. As well as doing a perimeter kind of buffer. In doing that, we're able to manipulate the grading a little more to save as many trees as we can because you have larger open space areas. Um, but a lot of the trees in the area that you see development because it is rear loaded. There's not much of a chance to remove, to, to save trees. It's just the, the space between homes is just too small and so it just doesn't lend.
Is this where the term tree bank?
Tree, tree bank is one of the things you can call it. The tree mitigation fee is what the city staff is, I think officially calls it, tree mitigation fee. And so we, the developer pays into, for, for development like this, there's no way to. Meet the proposed plantings, uh, the tree, if you planted that many of the trees in the open space areas, they would just. Kill each other and you wouldn't get a good actual landscaping. So you plant what's appropriate and what's right. And then the deficit, you pay into a tree mitigation fund. The tree, the city can use that for a multitude of things, whether it be a park plantings. Um, future developments, they can, they can use it for whatever they see fit. I'm sure there's. Codes and requirements on what they're allowed to use it for, but it goes into a specific fund, um, I'm sure Blanche probably handles that separately.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Yes, um, storm water, uh, it's my big topic. Um, taking a look at your plans, it looks like you have three different stormwater ponds here?
There's two, two total stormwater ponds, one of the, well, there's, there's actually going to be four, there's two. Uh, two main ponds that we'll call them on the southeast and southwest corner. And then the, if you look at, I don't want to call it the northwest, but it's the northwest of that leg that comes out, it's kind of L shaped. There's a small pond because of the way the road connectivity is to the crossroads development, uh, we're tying in the roadway there. Their roadway connection is lower than our site, so we had to drop a small pond just to handle that small section of roadway. Same thing for F E ru- F E Drive, um, it's lower than our site, so we had to create a small pond just to handle the entrance.
So the small ponds are only for?
A short portion of roadway, I would call it, like, call it about a hundred and fifty feet of roadway.
Okay, and so then your two main ponds down at the bottom, um, are where. The bulk of your drainage will go into?
Yeah, about ninety eight percent, about one percent for each one of the small ponds, the great, great majorities in those two ponds.
Now, are you splitting that fifty fifty or how is that going to work?
There's a basin map that we split it, we actually already have our Saint John's permit, uh, I can provide it to you if you'd like, but it, it really depends on, it's not necessarily fifty fifty, it's a. Probably closer to sixty forty, more of it goes to that southwest corner than goes to the southeast corner and, and that's really based on topography. What the existing grades are and what your proposing grades are. So where, how you can collect it and where you can run that water really runs that. In, in addition to what. Like once you get your geotech report and you find out what the soil, the underlying soils will allow, what kind of, um, velocity has, how fast the water drains. That, that plays a lot in the form water sign. But I, I don't know that I'd want to assign numbers, but if you want to, I'd say it's probably closer to sixty forty.
Okay, and what provisions do you have when they overflow?
So they have, uh, emergency overflow weers.
Yeah.
And so there's, there's, each one of them has a overflow weir that's designed for it.
And where does it go?
So in this southwest area, the crossroads has three different sea, the crossroads development, which is a separate development. This property is already draining that direction and so they have, um, three sea inlets to collect offsite drainage and they bypass their pond and goes to a low. Depression area in their site, it would pop there. This one goes to the, the, one to the southeast goes to the south, there's a, it drops about forty feet in elevation, a little bit further to the south. And so the emergency weir would drop down to that lower elevation.
And you have agreement from the property that it's going to flow on?
Not for emergency purposes, you don't need agreements, um.
Are they aware that you are building your development and in case of an overflow, it will be going on their property?
S- yes, sir. So in, in the case of an emergency, it always goes downhill and, and the lower property or the, whichever property is at a lower elevation. Doesn't have the right to block someone upstream.
Yeah, but no, my question is, are they aware that that's how you designed your ponds?
Uh, I don't know if they're aware, but they're aware that they're at the bottom of the hill, yeah.
Okay, but you've had no communication with them?
They did have communications with this developer, um, as a potential for a future phase to, to move down. So there's already communications to potentially add them onto this because we are doing a roadway step out and utility step outs to them.
Yeah, m- m- my only concern is that, whoops, here it comes. And they haven't made any plans for it to come. My only concern is notifying them, hey, you know, you're downhill. And if these things do overflow, it's a coming down to fear.
Neither, neither one of these ponds actually, um, discharged during the design storm events, uh, as Jeff was actually speaking about earlier, the, the, the requirements in. Water manager district today are much different than they were in the seventies, eighties and nineties, they're much more stringent. And so you have to design, you have to really over design for what these storm events are. And so the, neither one of these actually discharge at all, so for the up to a hundred year storm event, the ponds will handle all of the storm water and just hold it back. In, uh, as you brought up, you can have up to three stormers back to back to back, understanding if in that case of emergency, it will continue to go down. We are not the bottom, we are not the, the, the valley or the bottom section. And so there are different requirements for them as they, as you get down there, but for us, we've more than designed what our requirements are. And there really shouldn't be any discharge from our ponds to the adjacent properties unless you have an emergency situation like you indicated.
Question for the attorney. Can we, i- is there anywhere in the code that there has to be communication? With the journey of properties on situations like this?
No, I'm not, I'm not aware of any, um, maybe a question for staff as, as far as that goes. That, but, but what I'd also point out is, of course, you're dealing with, um, uh, some of the permitting, the state agency permitting, uh, you know, in these cases. Um, but, uh, I'll let you.
This underwent, on the south underwent, um, annexation as well as future land use change and rezoning. The rezoning for this required a master plan that accompanied it, which is actually really very similar to the major development plan now. Those entitlement processes requires public hearing notifications and yes, Crossroads is aware. Crossroads aware of everything going on in the Kelly Park interchange because they are part of the pioneering agreement. So they know this is there and coming.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add some additional information, um, uh, you know, as, as Jean pointed out. Uh, Sanchez, any type of, anytime, anytime you have that type of a situation, there is a proximity requirement. To provide notice in addition, of course, to, uh, notice, um, that is just general newspaper notice. So I don't know what the proximity is per se, but there may be some notice that is caught up in that, just depending on how close the developments are to each other that is required. Um, just to make sure I answered your question, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Washington.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, just two questions, A and B. Um, the traffic. Any thoughts about how much traffic will be generated and put out, uh, onto F E? And of course, F E goes, uh, terminates at the on ditch and also terminates down to Kelly Park, correct?
Yep.
So you have three hundred and some odd homes and a lot of folk, a lot of folks, a lot of cars.
Yeah, there's.
What do you think about all that?
Yep, I'm just trying to wait for you to answer for your full question, sorry. Uh, there is some thought put into that, so we did coordinate with, they're both Orange County roads. And so we're kind of, this is a similar situation as other developments that, that have been brought for this commission before. Where your adjacent on ditch and F E road are both county roads. All the internal roads and the connections that we're making to the west are city roads. According to the Orange County, there's, uh, existing ninety foot right of way for on ditch roads and there's no right of way dedication. For F E Drive, we're proposing additional twenty foot right of way dedication to account for the future widening and expansion of F E Road. We're also doing the turn lane improvements, um, on F E Road and we're paying some additional fees for the intersection that. For the additional trips generated for F E Drive and on ditch. So we have a separate agreement that we're working with on that.
It's good to accommodate the, the growth.
It's kind of like, they, they call it a prop, a proportion share agreement, so we're doing a prop, they call it prop share agreement. So we're accounting for that as a future signal and a future improvements to that intersection. And so we're, we're basically saying, we understand that we're going to put a portion of trips at that intersection, we'll prepay our. Proportion share of that intersection improvements.
Okay, good. Question B is, um. Uh, your project is, uh, not any different than a lot of other proj- projects in the Papka area with big and small homes. Um, and one thing just jumped out at, at me today again is that. Hundred and ninety five units are twenty foot wide homes.
Town, that's correct.
And I'm just sitting in my house saying, well, twenty feet wide. Could I live in a house that's twenty feet wide? Is that right?
It, the townhomes are twenty feet wide, the attached units, correct, the detached are thirty four foot lots and forty foot lots. Correct, yep. Yeah, it's a shared mall.
Thank you. So, um. Just out of curiosity, what is the target market for those homes? Who would want to live in a?
I, I will tell you a lot more. I will tell you a lot more than you think, um, so. I, I own a small business and a lot of my employees are very interested in the townhomes, i- they're, they're attractive for different reasons, um. The maintenance on them is really the main thing that I, I'm seeing a lot of my employees and a lot of the generation that is coming for us as first time home buyers are interested. A, you can buy them at a much cheaper rate, you're talking about hundred, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars cheaper than. A typical fifty foot lot, a house that you would have probably bought when you were a young, single, young married man. Um, and so that's attractive to people to have that affordability. In addition to maintenance, you no longer have to. Mow your lawn every Saturday in the summer because in townhomes, you have a H O A that takes care of that. And so the maintenance, you also share the cost of, we're doing your roof every fifteen, twenty years, you don't have to consider that, you pay that as a monthly fee and additional fees. So the, just the, the maintenance of the, the home, they've replaced the annuals, they've replaced the irrigation, they have it on different schedules, it's, it's a, it's a difference. It's almost like the, a halfway point between apartments and, and a single family home. Uh, they are still considered single family fee simple, but it's, it's kind of a, a, a mixed point, right? And so I think there's a lot more people, maybe not, uh, my generation or your generation, but there's a lot more people today. Uh, and, and if I was a young, single or young married couple, I'd probably consider something like that as well. With, with young kids myself, I don't, I would not consider that. I want a bigger backyard that I can play in, but, um, I think there's a lot more people than you would think that are very interested in those.
Alright, and these, uh, units, are they rear loaded?
Every single one is rear loaded, correct. So some of them, let's say, a little more than half, roughly half are rear loaded townhomes, meaning they're attached. The other half of them are, uh, detached rear loaded, so they call them bungalow units, but. Yeah.
So, um, a lot of folks love these, um, long trucks, the dualies. So, uh, if somebody has a dually, I guess they can park in their driveway behind their unit?
Yeah, so I think the city code.
Into the street, that's my point.
Yeah, the, we took that into account and we did this because we, we understand, especially in the Poppy, there's definitely a higher percentage of trucks in some other areas of, of the central Florida area. Or central Florida overall. So by the APOP code, I want to say it's only a six foot rear setback limitation from the alleyways. We provided twenty five in addition to the additional, uh, distance between the right of way line and the alley. And so it's a minimum of twenty five feet, which you can easily fit a dually truck.
Thank you.
Alright, any more questions? Thank you, sir. Is anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to, to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I got a discussion point for the board here.
Alright, Commissioner Dooley.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Mark and Woods, I appreciate you bringing up the stormwater and also the trees. Obviously, I've talked extensively about the landscape plans for this and, you know, I think it's, it's sad that. There's so many trees that are being destroyed and, and the green spaces are somewhat at a minimum for this project. But it is consistent with the land development code. And I think that's really where we need to focus this addressing and get the green space requirement up. And also work on preserving some of these, uh, trees, I mean, these mature trees, when they're cut down, we're never going to see them again in our lifetime, look like this. And I think we're missing an opportunity to preserve some of that, that's just my point on it. Again, I think this project is consistent with the land development code, but that's not incumbent on the applicant to, uh, to change. Again, I think this project is consistent with the land development code, but that's not incumbent on the applicant to, uh, to change land development code, that's incumbent on us to recommend it. Which is what I am doing, again, recommending changes to land development code, thank you.
Well, the land development code also requires adequate infrastructure to support your development, so, uh, I think it's lacking there.
Sure, sure. Good point.
All right. Anyone else? All right, ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll make a recommendation to find the proposed Ondich South major development plan consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code. Recommend approval of the major development plan based on the findings, facts presented in the staff report exhibits.
All right, thank you, sir, motion by Commissioner Mott, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Oh, any opposed?
Uh-huh, one, no.
I thought you said yes, sorry. Okay.
And, uh, Mr., Mr. Howell, please tell the city commission that, uh, this did not pass unanimously. My concern was wastewater, uh, treatment capacity.
Yes, that'll be in the staff report that goes forward, that the, it would not be a unanimous approval of recommendation of approval.
Also tell them that there is no plan for, uh, um, wa- wastewater treatment, uh, increased capacity, and there's also no funding.
All right. Site plan number two. Roseville Farms LLC Wolf Lake Phase Two Major Development Plan. Applicants Appian Engineering care of Vido Sanchez. Location northeast corner of Poncan Road and Poncan Pines Road. As this is quasi judicial, I will have to ask the members of the board, has anybody had ex parte communication on this matter?
Yes, sir.
Very well, Ms. Sanchez.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Wolf Lake Ranch Phase Two Major Development Plan. The subject property is located, located on northeast corner of Poncan Road. And Pon- Poncan Pines Road, approximately twenty-nine acres in size. The major development plan comprises development of a private residential subdivision with fifty-nine single family detached unit. A typical lot width of eighty feet and living area of two thousand square feet. Access to this phase is through the Wolf Lake Ranch Phase One, a secondary, a secondary access is also shown, shown on Poncan Pines Road and Phase Two. Phase One and Phase Two will yield a total development of one hundred and twenty units, based on the sum of the areas of both phases. Portions of Phase One, Lot Fifteen and Track B will be removed from that phase. And added to Phase Two via the plating process that will result in the aforementioned total units. The applicant proposes eight acres of open space that includes buffer and amenity stormwater ponds in the Phase Two portion. As well as passive and active recreation areas constructed under Phase One, such as walking trails, sports fields, playgrounds. And picnic areas. Apologies, this is actually the landscaping plan, not the architectural, and it proposes planting of red maples. Cedars, sycamore, Japanese blueberry trees and live oaks in the project area. The DRC recommends approval, the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the major development plan based on the facts and findings in the staff report and exhibits. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez, anyone have questions of staff?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Doomey.
I saw that the, uh, the developer's applicant show entered into a concurrent, concurrency mitigation agreement with the Orange County Public Schools. What is the process for that?
Um, I will let them tell you. Hi there, Tina Demosney with MI Homes, four hundred International Parkway, Lake Mary, Florida, three two seven four six. Um, we are in the process of working through, we have to do a, um, concurrency mitigation agreement. So they've determined that there is not capacity, they've determined the number of seats that we'll have to pay for. Um, and we are in the process of entering into the agreement with the school board, um, because we've got the previous phase that's vested and we're putting one unit up there. Um, we had, we were working with them to figure out if they wanted the full legal description, partial, so, um, just got that figured out this week, so. Um, now I can get the legal description to them that they want and move forward the agreement, so.
And how long does something like that normally take?
They said, um, in their application, and I, and I think it's been pretty good, about two months, so.
Okay.
So three months, long, just depend if you like miss a hearing, see if they have, you know, like.
It's also worth noting that those school CMA, the, the concurrency mitigation agreements, it's a tri-party agreement, so. Um, it goes to you all for execution, the applicant, school board, and then it goes to city council for sign off by the mayor.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, any more questions? Commissioner Wood of the staff or applicant?
Uh, applicant.
Applicant, ma'am?
My typical stormwater questions.
Oh, well, this is gonna be this guy for sure.
This is an easy one.
Okay.
I see that Phase One and Phase Two are sharing stormwater, um, ponds, how is that working out?
Uh, Phase One Stormwater Pond is handling all of the Phase One runoff and, uh, rainwater. And Phase Two is only handing, handling the Phase Two area.
Okay, cause I see, um, B B and C C tracks are listed as stormwater ponds. And is one in Phase One and one in, I couldn't make that out looking at the map.
I think the confusion is, so, the diff- the, right there between Phase One and Phase Two, there's a ridge line, and so Phase One, this is just Phase Two.
Right.
This shows the two ponds to the north. There's one pond to the south that runs along Poncan Road, there's a, there's actually a really big hill, there's a lot of elevation difference. All of Phase One drains to the south, adjacent to Poncan Road currently, and Phase One is a standalone development as it is. Phase Two, there's two additional ponds that we go over top of the ridge, and we start to drain to the north then.
Okay, well, the notes said that they were sharing ponds, that's why I had the question. I couldn't figure out how they were gonna, because what you were saying there, how they were sharing ponds.
One HOA, so there will be one master HOA over the whole development, and so they're gonna share the amenities, we're putting some amenities up top. So the people in the south, southern portion, which on this plan that's showing these bottom lots right here, that's kind of the line between Phase One and Phase Two. You can kind of see it there with a move in the cursor, um, but there is gonna be a master association that will manage all of it. But this part will, um, you know, be plotted by on its own and, you know, stormwater function.
Right, yeah, I understand, all I was saying that in the notes, it said that. Phase One and Phase Two were sharing stormwater ponds, and I was just curious because of that ridge. Uh, when I was out that way, um, how that was gonna work. What, so what you're telling me is Phase One has a unique pond to themselves. And Phase Two will be sharing two ponds. Okay, thank you.
All right, any more questions?
I got one of staff.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm gonna make a point of order right now, because this makes me crazy. When we're having, when the staff is speaking and I say, who, any questions of staff, then we have this, we ask questions of the staff, because I was afraid of this exact situation. Because then the staff defers to the applicant, the applicant comes up, now the staff comes back, and it, it creates confusion and, and a person. Without the YouTube video trying to figure out what's going on and who's talking is impossible. So, and, and I'm not admonishing you, I guess probably staff, when staff's times up there, and there's a question that the applicant needs to answer. Don't turn around and say, oh, well, let me ask, no, you stay here and answer the question, you can't answer, you say it's a question for the applicant. Then when it's time for the applicant, the applicant can come up, and it keeps it clear and concise, because it's making me crazy, okay? So, when staff is up there, you ask a staff question, if this question is deferred, you wait, and then we'll ask the applicant when it's their turn. And that way we don't have people going back and forth, okay, rant off.
Yeah, that works for me, thank you.
Fair point, fair point, so my question with staff was just thinking back on the Poncan Road situation. Now, we've had a couple developers come up through here, or, or residents, that were expressed concerns about the safety of that road on the curve. Was there any questions or consider, um, let me say, concerns raised? And by city engineers or the road experts on this situation? Or the ability of Poncan Road to handle the flow, plus whether that curve is safe or not?
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure, then let me ask Diana, would you, or, or Vlad?
All right, is that, if that's a question for the engineer, then you have to say, I have a question for the engineer, do you understand? And now if you say who you are, and, and the reason being is, again, I'm not trying to beat on this, but if. Everybody speaks out of turn or we have people changing, and the YouTube record is gone, who's gonna transcribe this, who asked that question, who answered that question? And that's the reason why when someone, I say, does anybody have any questions, the first words out of my mouth is Commissioner Ryan. Now, Commissioner Ryan asked a question, and he speaks up in the middle of it, now we don't have any way to track him, so. It's, it's a Robert's Rules of Order thing, but, and it's not mine, it's, it's for the efficiency of the meeting, so we have a clear and concise record.
Okay, uh, for the record again, Vladimir Simanovsky, city engineer. Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Doomey. The new road, the Phase Two proposed is actually all private roads, that is all internally connected, and there's no direct connection to. Uh, West Poncan Road, that's my recollection of the project now. Uh, I believe the other, uh, road where they connect, it's called Poncan Pines. It's just perpendicular to Poncan Road, so, yes, will bring some additional flow to the Poncan Road, that's for sure. Uh, the other issue with that is Poncan Road is still jurisdictional in the county. And really, this project does not reflect directly any additional work to Poncan Road. So there's no additional need for, let's say, right away permit in this situation, right? Now, with other new developments that eventually will be reevaluated, both by the city and by the county, but ultimately. The county makes a decision of what improvements are required for Poncan Road at this point. And maybe at some point that road will be transferred over to the city, but that's, again.
Thank you.
Another topic.
Any more questions for the engineer? All right, very well, any more questions for the applicant? Very well, is anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, um, I'll make a motion to find that the proposed Wolf Lake Ranch Phase Two. Major development plan consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code. And recommend approval of the major development plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you, sir, motion by Commissioner Washington, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Woods, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. All right, site plan number three, Plymouth Harbor Major Development Plan. Owners Plymouth Harbor LLC, George McCauley, Parmani Farms LLC, applicant Jeff Summit PE. Location, west side Plymouth Sorento Road, north of Bailey Hill Road. As this is quasi judicial, I need to ask the board, has anyone had ex parte communication on this matter?
No, sir.
Very well, Ms., oh, Mr. Howell. Look at you, got it. Almost called you Miss Howell.
I called a lot of things. Yeah, right? For the record, Bobby Howell, planning manager. Plymouth Harbor Major Development Plan proposes eighty-six single family dwelling units at a density of two point one six units per acre. Property is located on the west side of Plymouth Sorento Road, north of Bailey Hill Road. Future land use designation is residential low suburban, which permits a maximum density of three and a half units per acre. However, the applicant is proposing a density, maximum density of two point one six dwelling units per acre, and the zoning is residential, single family one B. The RSF one B permits a maximum or minimum lot size of, uh, eight thousand square feet, minimum lot width of seventy-five feet. And the major development plan details the design of the proposed subdivision in accordance with the requirements of the residential low suburban future land use category. And the RSF one B zoning district. The site is accessed by a left and right turn lanes on Plymouth Sorento Road. A thirty foot wide right away dedication is reserved along the portion of the property abutting Plymouth Sorento Road for future road widening. Storm waters propose to be discharged into a pond located in the central portion of the site. Thirty-six percent of the site is set aside as open space, minimum twenty percent is required. This consists of the stormwater retention area, playground, dog park and site, this dog park and site landscaping. The proposed use of the property is depicted on the major development plan is consistent with the residential low suburban future land use designation is detailed within the comprehensive plan. And is consistent with the land development code. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, and the recommended motion is approval, uh, myself and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Howell, anyone have questions of staff? Commissioner Ryan.
Are there turn lanes for northbound traffic and southbound traffic into that subdivision?
Yes, so, let's see, right here, that would be northbound, this left turn that lane that you see. And then there's a right turn lane leading from southbound.
Is there any plans to widen the road?
Yes, as I mentioned, there is a dedication of thirty feet of right away, where you see this track line right there for future road widening.
For future road widening.
Yes, it's, I don't think it's imminent at this time.
Okay, okay, let me kick it down the road, okay.
I can hear the camp.
Thank you, Mr. Howell.
All right, any more questions of staff? All right, Mr. Wood.
Uh, what's on the north side?
It's vacant property, I believe.
Pardon me?
Vacant property, I believe.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you, is applicant here, do they have a presentation?
Uh, Jeff Summit, Summit Engineering, again, for the record, I don't have a presentation, we happen to answer any questions if you have any.
Very well, anyone have questions of the applicant? Made you walk up here for no reason.
That's okay, I need the exercise.
Very well. Anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, uh, happy to create the motion, but I'm glad to see that the, uh, green space on this is well above the minimum. So, given that, I'll happily make the motion. To recommend approval of Plymouth Harbor Major Development Plan, subject to the findings in the staff report and exhibits.
Easy there, big fella. Thank you, motion by Commissioner Doomey, do I have a second? Yes, I do, Commissioner Ryan, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. All right. Bear with me a second, we do have one thing. Do we have any old business? Anyone have new business? All right, I have new business. Um, Bobby, uh. By our tow of ordinance, that we are, one of the things here is that we are to act to the local planning agency, city under state law and local planning agency. Number one is prepare the city's comprehensive plan and amendments to comprehensive plan, and I know that when we amend it. You know, we come, you guys come here ahead of time, what, what I would ask is that, and I know I have a copy of it that I was given when I started this. But I know it's been changed forty-six times since then, can we get a current copy of? The comprehensive plan for each, a, a printed copy, and I, I, I realize everybody wants to do a digital, but a printed copy. Cause a lot of us are old folks up here, and we like a piece of the paper, because a lot of the questions sometimes that we have. If, if we know what the code is, or we have it there in front of us, like, you know, like a, a stormwater issue or parking issue, we can look at it. And then, if, if we know, when I look and say, okay, we're gonna change comprehensive plan number blah, 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 blah. When I get that from, from Aaron prior to the meeting, I can look it up and see what it is, understand the whole thing, because, you know, because of time constraints, you can't. Go through the whole two pages of that code related, where we can do that in our, at our leisure, and, and I think it's important that we have an updated copy that everybody has access to. And thank you for Commissioner Ryan to point that out, because it's a very valid point.
Yeah, we'll get you a copy of the current existing comp plan as it is, and I will just let everybody know that, um, next month, the planning commission, we will have the rewrite. Of the comp plan brought forward, we had it originally scheduled for this evening, however, there was an error with advertisement with the newspaper. Uh, so therefore we couldn't meet, uh, public hearing notification.
Well, that'd be great if you could give us what that is.
Yes.
Ahead of time, and, and I know she says it ahead of time, but I'm just saying for our, our own notification, we can look it up and read and have an understanding what it is. Cause sometimes we ask questions that may seem redundant to you, because you guys know the code, you wrote it and you. You wrote it, you, you work with it every day, we don't.
Yep, absolutely.
Streamline things a little bit.
You got it.
And, and it takes a little bit to read through seven hundred pages.
Yeah.
'Cause I think the last read was, uh, over seven hundred pages. And, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, I'd like to, you know, bring something up here in the new business part. Kind of, uh, tagging on to what you're, you know, sharing and, and requesting. A lot of what we do here and what comes before the planning commission. The determination is in the master plan. So to get the master plan where it says and stipulate certain things, that's where we need to concentrate. So, you know, so I'd love to have as much time as possible to read through that, because, um, the last time I read through it. I had eight pages, single-spaced, of items that I had noted, that I was like, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. And, you know, and I come from that perspective, having sit and listened here. And, you know, we come up here, you know, it's fine that we, you know, ask questions, I ask questions about the trees, you know, et cetera, and that type of thing. Um, I think we rightly are now asking a lot of questions about the stormwater management. And the water and rain runoff, et cetera, and that type of thing. We ask about traffic, we ask about road building. Um, I think we have somewhat given up on the school, um, aspect. Because, um, while we can have a conversation about the schools, that's set by the state of Florida. And it's set by Orange County Public Schools. So, you know, I, I would encourage anybody that has any concerns about those, attend the Orange County School Board meeting. And then start lobbying in Tallahassee to change, uh, you know, I sit there, what is it? It's fifteen or seventeen over, you know, trigger something, I'm sitting there going, why can't it be eight? You know, why can't it be half of seventeen? Why, you know, what, what does it, you know, what does it take? So, um, I'm, I'm fully aware that it takes money to build a road. And, and you, and it's not very often that a road gets built without money. Um, in, in pre-planning, certainly the gentleman, I think he's already left. I certainly understand he has no idea how long it takes to sell a house, um, you know, to, to build, you know, a, um, a, a development out. But, you know, just, just this, this week, the stories come out about the, the water, um, situation there on Golden Gem Road. And, you know, potential in, in fines to the city, et cetera. Um, it's a lengthy, lengthy process to go through to get that. Um, all the permitting, all the engineering, you know, everybody, you know, coordinated into that. So, you, we're talking, and in fact, I think even as I read in the article, it's a two or three-year period of time. That the state has given the city of Apopka. So that's not a quick fix. So, I would really like to see, and I realize this is probably not in the comprehensive plan. And if it's not, I'm going to suggest that it get put in the comprehensive plan. When we come to the planning, you know, uh, council and ask for us, whether it's, you know, legislative or quasi judicial. I would like to have someone say, we've already evaluated, um, I mean verbally, for the record, verbally for the record. Even though it is in what I read on, you know, in my packet. We've already talked to Orange County, that does get, you know, has a conversation, and Orange County is fine with the, you know, overage. Um, we have talked with, uh, Saint John's Water Management, and where everybody's good. I think, uh, somebody said something about, you know, being downhill forty feet. And that Saint John's Water Management a- approved theirs, et cetera, and that type of thing. But somewhere in our, uh, master plan, I think that we need to put in something to the effect that. In the beginning, okay, we're individually looking at this community. We do a traffic study about this community, we do a water runoff about this community. But when these four communities are built, we need to have something in the comprehensive plan that comes back two, three years later. And combines all four of them together. Because when you're sitting there looking at a three hundred sixty-two, um, unit. I think the number for traffic is one point six per unit, one point five, one point six per unit. Well, I can do math pretty quick. Uh, you know, you're, you're looking at, you know, not just a few shy of six hundred, uh, traffic, you know, patterns. Where I live, um, in, in less than a quarter mile. Just the people that live there, I think, using the data, it's sixteen thousand trips a day. And that does not account for any of the paths through traffic that comes up and down the road that I'm on. So, somehow, um. We need to move away from having a discussion about the roads and et cetera. Or that, well, that's the county and that's this, and why would the county do this? And we need to build something into the comprehensive plan that says, you know, here, here's a, here's a, a, a warning sign. Or here's a hard stop sign. This is a hard stop. We do not move forward hard stop here because of this. Or, you know, or something, because when it gets down to a situation where after the fact, I'm the type of person. I woe the day when I have to apologize for something that I knew. And had forewarning for. I do not like interacting in that manner. I would, you know, if, I mean, I'm supposed to be an intelligent person, I'm supposed to use my intelligence. And, oh, well, you know, it was a, you know, yeah, that was a possibility, you know? I mean, you, you know, as example, where I live, I'm, I'm standing out there, I counted fourteen or fifteen school buses. That use that intersection every morning. Fortunately, another crash this morning, and this is just an example of many other spots in Apopka. Uh, in, in a six-year period of time, it's probably close to thirty crashes. Fortunately, it's not been a school bus yet. Fortunately, there hasn't been a fatality yet. I am aware that you can't. Um, move in such a, a fashion that, well, you know, the hundred-year flight. If you have three, that's, you know, you can say, well, you, you know, okay, we've met this, we've met this. But I'm also going, okay, can we go to, uh, you know, ten percent more, just in case? Because what have we found here in Florida? Yeah. And then we come back and we go through this whole thing, you know, developments. You know, we, we put these trees, we have these things, we have the trees and everything. And I'd love to see those drawings, where's the current power line? 'Cause one thing that drives me insane is fifteen years later to see trees cut in a V. Just cut the dang tree down. Don't have, pay somebody to cut the trees so the power line runs through it. To me, that's not intelligent planning. That's just how I go. So, I would like to see when we have things that come from the DRC to the planning. So that it goes on, and yes, the city council ultimately holds the responsibility to make that decision. But we've got to be able to have some information that we can move forward. I mean, you know, the, the comprehensive plan, I mean, it has had some tweaks, but how long has it been? Years. And I'll be interested to read through the seven hundred pages and to, um, probably create more than eight pages of single-spaced suggestions. Thank you.
I can tell you'll never make it as a politician if you read all seven hundred pages, you just suppose a glance at it and vote on it, come on. Alright, guys, anything else?
No, sir.
Me a good job.
Thank you.